It's 4:01, we'll go ahead and get started, Ricky calls, he's running a few minutes behind. We'll go ahead and start, and I'll let Mr. Chaney kick it off, and basically go over the items that we kind of tasked him to do at the last meeting.
Appreciate it, Haley with me, and then Don also, civil engineer. We want just to be interactive, informative, exchange. You guys gave us a pretty big homework assignment. And I think we've done what you asked us to do, we'll go with that in more detail, project by project. There's two things that are not included in this, that we have talked about at some level. One is the HUAC countywide, still waiting on some of the members and engineers on that. And then also a track. Talked about putting a track when we redo the stadium there at the high school. And with just a little bit of work, Don and his group were able to determine that a track really will not fit on that property. It doesn't leave any room for bleached seating, especially on the home side. Now, if you want to get into shifting the football field to the north a little bit, we could accommodate it, but that's a huge undertaking with great amount of drainage. And it's just, if that's the direction you want us to go, we'd be glad to look at that further, but it didn't seem like a good idea at that time. And so, we thought about the property back here behind, how we're going to plan with the board building. And Don's done some investigation on that, and it's not long enough. The parking, and still have to build some type of restroom facility, or some type of public facility like that. So there's some costs, even if there was a property here. So Don put together just a little simple eight and a half by eleven drawing of the overall dimensions of the track, so when we get to that, if y'all want to talk about that, that'll give us a starting point for looking at property somewhere else, if that's what you wanted to do. So, as I said, we'll go ahead and get started. Each of the projects, and we've separated each school as if they were a standalone project, but in reality, when we get to the construction point, a lot of these could be combined together to make it a little bit bigger, more attractive projects for a contractor. Now, that way, you'd be dealing with three or four contractors instead of ten contractors. There's some benefit to that as well. So, and each, as we go through, Haley, just jumping in behind Don on the side as well. Each school is set up the same, the first page, we've got a little vicinity map of identifying the school. And then the next page is the budget. And we've gone through the list that y'all gave us on each school. Those are the items identified in red, the ones specifically asked for. But as we walk through, either because of a code issue, or something that we saw, we have added some other things to the list. Some may need to be done for various code reasons, some kind of a ripple effect, or might be a benefit, or something that you'd like to do, so we can talk about each one of those. Don has identified some different components and aspects of the civil and side area of each school. And so, Don, you want to say something about that?
Yeah, sure. So, sort of, a lot of the, we found some common elements at most every school. And so, where they're at was drainage, roof drains that we wanted to take underground, that were spilling the grade, that were causing foundation issues, that were causing ground to be washed away around where they hit, because of no splash pad or anything. We've made some allowances at most every school for the same type of work, whether it was doing spot grading, to take out some hose spaces, to help with some drainage, to backfill behind curbs. The type of curbs that are installed at most every school, they really get their strength from having backfill behind them. Otherwise, as a car, it's easy, when a car pulls up against it, it's easy to crack it. Over time, that becomes a broken curb. And so, there's broken curbs at most schools, and so, there's very few places where the curbs are actually backfilled. So, we've made an allowance at most every, every school for, and you'll see it, desk down here on the side, cost table, as miscellaneous grading. Miscellaneous grading is to, like I said, backfill around sticks that are washed away, and you've got a trip hazard condition to backfill behind the curbs, so that curbs can not break over time, and that's where they get their strength, is behind compact fill behind them. Or places along foundations that have washed away over time, that need some dirt against them to help shed drainage away from the school, or just general low areas that have washed out over time, to where someone in a couple hours' time with a backhoe could shape a ditch, put some geotechnical fabric in it to give it some sort of stability, and then backfill it with some dirt to ship it up, and seed it, and straw it, and then over time, that will let it stabilize, and the washed out road area would take care of. And so, most schools, we allow for some pavement replacement and parking locks that were had broken, broken areas that were starting to crack and settle, and at some point, you'll need to dig out in place. We've made some allowances at each school to fix drainage issues, and also to fix handicap parking ramps and parking stalls that are not necessarily code compliant. And then also, like I just talked about, miscellaneous side grading. And so, those are common threads among all sides. And so, even if, even if the request from the board was just to seal drive, to seal parking locks, well, as we walked the parking locks, we saw that there were some cracked areas that were pretty open, pavement was alligator, and so, we knew that there was a little bit of subgrade, and so, that would require removing some pavement, some stone, backfilling it with some new fresh pavement, and then seal the driveway, and then also now you've got a great new parking lot for a long time, and also to restructure it. So, common elements, as I said, some pavement replacement on parking locks that were identified to be sealed and restructured, spot grading around all schools, some seating to fix bare robed areas, some drainage repairs, and a number of schools were looking to try to take some of their drains underground to fix the potential for long-term maintenance. Kind of clean that up.
And as we, as we put the budgets together, this is just kind of the opening stage, the different phases of the project, and as we go through, we collect more information, geotechnical information, surveys, topo and boundaries, subgrade information from the geotechnical report. And so, this is kind of the 30,000 foot level estimate, as we go through from phase to phase, the budget gets revised, gets updated with more information. So, this is kind of, look at this as a work in progress.
And one last thing that I had, a number of schools had some sidewalk that were missing that are probably needed, and so, we've made the allowance for that most areas.
You can see the list items there at school, but the drawings that follow the budget are really, that's, that's the work that needs to be done. We tried to describe it in a, in a simple graphical format, so that you can understand the magnitude and how spread out the school, the work is. And so, that's what we would like to focus on today, is make sure that we heard what y'all are asking for, and go through the list, and not focus so much on, on the numbers and the dollars at this point, although that's very important to be considered. We need to make sure that we have the scope of the project buttoned up and nailed down as much as any. Does anybody have any questions on?
What is the, I know it's probably, the vehicle crash protection, what is that?
So, that's, so, that was a request from Dr. Whingingham. So, from our past experience working on apartment military sites, you know, how they'll have reinforced protection standards, you know, to keep cars from, from coming into the front entry of, of military installations, but we wanted to apply the same type of approach here to protect the front school, playing public areas.
It's like a lot of retail store, you see the bollards out in front, so it can be that's.
And I think that's coming from the last meeting we had, that he brought up, that somebody ran a car into a school, and that's kind of the mix.
And those things can be accomplished very non-construal. I mean, you can go to Target, you can see all the planners. Well, those things are there for purpose, they're not there for the landscape, they're there for, keep people from, from driving a car or a vehicle through that public area.
And it doesn't have to be anything malicious. There was a school in Rome County several years ago, lady was, grandmother was waiting to pick her grandson up, and took her, didn't have the car in park, took her foot off the gas, or off the brake, for some reason hit the gas, and accelerated, jumped the curb, and traveled probably 20 feet through the grass, and into the classroom. So, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be something malicious, or terroristic in nature.
So, it all takes the one time to create an action throughout, ripple throughout the campus.
And if you look on, on the restrooms, Haley, you want to talk about?
Yeah, well, just in general, the same that Don was saying with the civil cost, the architecture or the building cost, the same, it's kind of, you know, the same general items repeated throughout most of the schools. And so, on the first plan page, we have the intercom bell and clock system, it's like an integrated system that we recommend to, as a regular system, basically.
And some of, some of the list of all, we took the list that you gave us, and as we walked around with Dr. Whingingham, and made our own observations, and walked around the faculty and staff at each school, they had some comments and some things that they felt like were important, so we took what they said to heart and added that to the, to the list, and tried to accommodate it.
Yeah, so you'll see several of these items over, so there's the intercom bell and clock system, then you have security upgrades, and that consists of several different things through those, but one of the big items is the restroom accessibility upgrades. And what that requires is right now, you have three foot wide stalls throughout every restroom, and an ADA compliant restroom is five feet wide, so in order to widen that end stall to be accessible, you're going to lose one stall in every single restroom area. And so, we just, you know, kind of tried to show that graphically, and understand what all is, you know, going to be required in those places.
So, we've done a, kind of a schematic drawing later on in your book, showing that concept. And there's going to be some things like that, that impact as, whatever the project is, what I call the ripple effect. You want to make it ADA compliant, and you should, but when you do that, you lose a number of fixtures to make that a combination, so.
But those upgrades also do reduce removing the CME partitions that are in there, and plumbing fixtures.
That, that, that fix, or that, trying to solve that problem is extremely costly undertaken. You've got underslab plumbing, the drains, you've got the electrical work that's buried inside the existing concrete, what walls, it all has to come out and be redone, so just very nature. It's like renovating your kitchen at home, that's, that's the most, or bad, most, two most costly areas that you could renovate at home, so similar concept here. Anybody have any questions while we're on, on that?
So, a few of the schools did have a secure entrance special door, but most have been tried to show how, with the simplest way to create a secure entrance special door at the entrance each school, so that is really not a costly line item, really, it's just going to consist of a room, storefront wall, and another set of secure doors, so.
All the schools did have to be buzzed in, but at A.H. Roberts, for instance, once you get buzzed into the door, the office is there on the left, you kind of scouts on or make sure that you do go into the office. So, what we're talking about are some structural modifications to the building to force you into the office, and being screened and allowed in to the school.
So, while we're talking about A.H. Roberts, let's talk about some of the, some of the specific side elements that are outside of spot grading and broken curb, like we talked about in the past. And so, here at A.H. Roberts, the big side issue is the playground area, that southwest corner of the building, there's, there's a stick there that, that's completely washed away, around the stick that comes outside, back you can see the wall, the foundation. And so, that's.
It's all preca.
And so, and so, we've got some issues also there with ADA accessibility issues, and so, what we're proposing there is, is to pick up that whole end, that whole end of the side up several feet, so we'll need to put a retaining wall around, around, up next to the sidewalk, to raise that up, put some fill in behind there, get all of that to an accessible, to an accessible grade. There's, I think there's some steps that come around, it's all steps down, take those out, and sort of level all that out to where it's an accessible area, but also fix the drainage side grate to where it's not going to wash over time, like it's doing now. But also blend that into the playground area, if you walk around, the fence is just sitting on timbers, and so, it's probably not as sturdy as it could be, and so, as, as we're redoing the playground area, because we would have to move the equipment, and raise that grade a couple of feet, and we'll need to redo the, redo the fence, so all of that will tie together. The, the walkway coming out of the end, is that where buses pick up?
It is that.
Yeah, so that, that's not right now, it's not code compliant as far as accessibility, and so, we'll actually need probably switch back ramp system there with, with ramps and handrails, so. That's probably the biggest outside the building fix, but there, there needs to be some money spent on that south, south corner.
A few more questions while we're on A.H.? The, the next school is Allen's, and same thing there, bell and clock system, secure And there were some, the gym floor was an item there, and there's money in the budget for that, and then also some interior floor finishes and hays. We've got some samples, do you want any of those?
We can.
Yeah. The, the appeal of VCT, or vinyl composition pile, is that it's cheap. It's cheap to install, but it's, it's hard to maintain over the life of, you have to strip and wax it. I don't know if y'all tracked how much y'all spend on custodial costs each year, stripping and waxing floors, but I'm sure it's quite a big number. In the last five to 10 years, there's been some tremendous advancements in the flooring industry, and a lot of systems have gone away from using the VCT and using other flooring systems. I worked on a school in Dawson, Georgia, 10, 12 years ago. If you know, Dawson is a huge textiles town, and they didn't have easy feed in Shaw Industries and some others. They didn't give it to them, but they would develop a new product line, they would give them some of that material to, as kind of a human laboratory, to test their products, and so, over time, the quality has really come up, aesthetically, I think they're a lot better than just VCT, so. In the budget, you'll see, there's a big number in there for that, bigger than what it would be for just plain VCT, but you have a lot of different color and style options. They even have some, it's like wood flooring, plank flooring, so, which I think is kind of nice, and pumping spaces, it kind of humanizes the spaces a little bit, they're not so cold and stark, but, so that would be a recommendation to go back with something other than VCTs, where we replace flooring materials. And there were some places where it was starting to chip and fracture and come up, and so, just做个 some thought about that.
Do you have the lights and strip them?
No. So, maintenance wise, they're, and you still need, you know, it still needs repair and whatnot, but it's, you know, just, I've been in schools a week before classes start, and every chair and desk is, you know, put out into the hallway, and as you walk through looking at a potential project with somebody, the custodian almost threatens you, if you, if you walk on their, you know, wax floor, so a lot of that would be eliminated.
That's very, I have my wife do that sometimes, she does that, that's very time consuming, and it takes seven to 10 days for it to cure.
Yes, yeah. So, while we're on Allen's, the big, the big ask there was to fix the parking locks, and we're only out there hanging around. On the lower parking lock at Allen's, where the water vault is, it connects onto the, to the city water, there's a water line that cuts across that parking lot, up towards the school building, into a fire hydrant well. That water line, that the pavement over that water line has collapsed, because I just got bogged out in a van, and so, one of our, one of our requests here is to saw cut that pavement, backfill it properly with stone, compact the stone, and then put new fresh pavement in that trench where that water line is, so that nobody else bogs out, and then you come back, and then put crack seal where other large areas need to be fixed, and we're also carrying a line out for some other cracked pavement that needs to be dug out and replaced. But the big, the big fix there is where that water line is, the trench has collapsed, and pavement's cracked, has collapsed with it, and so, it does need to be taken out and filled, paved back over, before, before the, before the parking lock, or resealed or restructured.
And again, you see, we've got the, the restrooms highlighted, same ADA issue applies there. And then, there are a couple classrooms down on the, I don't even remember which direction that is now, but it's highlighted in yellow on the drawing on page 19 in your, in your book. There's, there's, some water has gotten, the, the wall construction is cavity wall, so you've got the CMU that's visible in the classroom, and the brick veneer, but in between that, you've got some, I hope you've got some insulation in there, but if not, at least there's an airspace in there. And that airspace is designed such that if water or moisture gets in there, there's supposed to be some weed holes at the bottom, for that water to, to wick its way out, and just keep that cavity dry. And for whatever reason, some, it looks like some moisture has stayed in there, and it's caused some problems with the exterior of the brick, and on the interior of the classrooms. And so, that's, that's something that, that needs to be addressed and done to fix that, so that you don't have any further damage to that wall.
No, I mean, what we, what we are proposing, I guess, is to, to remove the brick, so we can actually see the block, and to make sure that, I mean, that would prevent, resolve the problem with new drainage claim, tear gas, leakage, and insulation, and weed holes to properly drain the brick. And also, replacing and flashing at the top of that wall, the best way to eliminate that problem at their source.
Anybody have any questions while we're on Allen's? The next school we looked at was Hillham. And again, it's the same bell and clock system there, same entrance sequence, security type elements there.
I think here, a couple of unique things are in the gymnasium, the sound attenuation panels are not doing their job, and so, it's super loud in there, is what we were told. And so, we've included a cost to replace all of those, and actually add a little bit more square footage, to hopefully overcome that problem. So, that's a, that's a big cost on this school, otherwise, oh, and then also, the canopy is here, so there is an entrance canopy now, that you guys would like to extend it on either side to connect back to the main, it's on the ends of the building, so we've included a cost to replace the one that's there and extend it.
And in conjunction with that, we've got, the request was also to fix drainage, roof drains down the front and back, and so, as part of that canopy, we would like to connect those downspouts and bring a fitted sidewalk to drain down at the base of the pavement, and so, we've got some, some, some costs to do that, and also to pick up some sidewalks around the backside of the school, to where egress routes, fire marshalls, we asked that we took those out to paved, paved area. And so, that's, on every school, there's some amount of that going on. But on this one, the big, the big ask here was, some drainage repairs around the campus, There's some washed out areas on the backside, around the fence, there's a fenced area. Then next to the parking lot, it's got a ditch that's washed out, it's got a roof drain that comes. The park has had no head walls, it's a piece of plastic that's sold off, and it's washed that whole ditch out. So, there's some money here, program to fix missed landings, drainage areas all over the campus.
None of the downspouts were collected and taken underground to a catch basin and gotten away from the building. Were taken away from the building. They're all just, they come down and they turn into forty-five, and they stop right there. And there were a couple of places where it has caused some damage to the foundation. It's nothing tremendous at this point, but left over time, it'll continue to just erode in that location, and so.
And then also, we were talking just before everybody was here. Another request that we have is some money to put a blast wall around that tank farm on the backside because the end of those that they were getting heated, they're ain't right at the school. And so, we would have to put a wall between it to protect the structure. John and I have done that, infatable at school, they had a transport that was too close. So, we put a blast wall there. So, blast wall can be a CMU type wall system with core fill and a rebar in it. Or else a cast and place retaining wall. And then also, the site budget is carrying some cost for two classroom addition.
Yeah, I think just the number of car riders at this school, the additional length of canopy will help facilitate pickup and drop off, especially with the kindergartners and the little fellows down there.
And there is also, like on this set, a two classroom addition.
How many square feet is in that?
Eight hundred for each classroom plus the hallway.
There's. There's really just one place to add on, and it's not a great place. The hill really drops off there, and it goes down. I think there's a super pump station back there. So, obviously, when we get a little further and get some survey information and find out where those underground utilities are, you know, that could affect what we do there. But down there where the kindergarten wing is, it's just not a, the way the road comes in there, it's not a. Not a really viable alternative there. The next school we looked at was the high school. This was one of the schools that was impacted probably more than any of the others on our walkthrough with administration. It was built in the mid-seventies of, and so, it's forty-something years old at this time. And high schools have changed and evolved the way they function and their needs and their requirement. And so, just over that length of time, my high school is going to flex and change more than other elementary and middle school. Again, the clock and bell system are still. The flooring in about half of the building needs some attention. I think the other, the ring or the loop road around the mini theater, that hallway had been changed at some point. It's blue and white. You're looking at it like.
Blue and white tile there. Are you going to replace that?
No, 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 no.
So, you're just replacing the base?
Right, we moved the tennis court.
I mean, it is VCT. We recommend changing it, unless that's something that y'all wanted to do. It appeared to be intact. There was some, I walked around with the principal that day. Sports teams and athletics, and there's some things back there in the locker rooms that have been. Needed to be changed and revised, the way that they operate, the way that they dress out, the way that they. So, that is the area that's highlighted in yellow. If you look at page thirty-two. If you look at page thirty-two, you can see those changes there.
Yeah, changes in the boys' peeing room are mostly finished. And then also, potentially, like you're doing, we're trying to say with existing open shower area, just not used. So, but on the weight room and girls' pee, that's a little bit more extensive, requires a new wall. A lot more complicated, so we can also rework in the existing shower stalls adjacent to girls' pee and renovating that where there's just one portable shower and the rest of that is for addition. This one doesn't include the bleachers, new bleachers in the basement. Which one doesn't, I wonder, would you say bleachers in the gym?
Yeah, what was the question? Bleachers in the gym?
Be all the bleachers?
Yeah, be all, be the plastic seated top, as you said at some of other schools. And the diagram on page thirty-three shows that.
And the number for this new bleacher arrangement does include the hold down seats for preferred seating, more than what you have now, but still balanced with the overall seating.
The new plastic seating, does it take away any capacity from what it is now, or about the same? No, it's, the way you figure, it's, the code requires eighteen inches per seat. I think in England stadium, they give you about twelve inches per seat. But the code, the code says eighteen inches.
You get more in Clemson? You get more room over there?
They keep building. So, there's really no difference. The hallways are a little different in the newer bleachers as opposed to the old wooden bleachers. So, that takes away a little bit of seating, but I think overall, it's just a negative four. And I think we're looking, I think this is a layout showing thirteen.
Thirteen. Yeah, thirteen fifty.
Yeah, a little thirteen thousand, I mean thirteen hundred seating.
You're going to lose some seats when you put those aisles in there, won't you?
Little bit.
Yeah, and that's good.
Yeah. The new hallways, of course, they have the handrails in the center, and it kind of forces you to have an up and a down. It's a little safer that way. I have been in some schools in the last couple of years that still have the wood bleachers, that don't have the aisle ways. It's just solid seat from one end to the other, and there's no aisles, no handrails. We're using people's shoulders and heads to kind of make your way up, you know. That's what I learned, showing the locker room changes. And then the football stadium at the high school, we didn't include it with the high school, if I broke it out separately, if it were.
So, it, it must like, the big ask on the site on it was addressing the parking lots. There's some isolated areas. For most part, it's in pretty shape. Although there are, on the upper corner, as you pull in, before you get to the dark shack, there is one area that needs some pavement that's to be replaced. But it is a big area to have to seal on restry. That's why those numbers are sort of much larger than the other size. But also, we've got missing land site work for twelve classroom additions for freshman wing.
One thing before we move on to the football stadium, the classroom addition at the high school on page, page thirty-one now. Turns back to page thirty-one. We're showing the new classrooms north of the vocational area. And that may or may not be the best place to put that. All the parking for the football field is to the right of the school. And so, now you're just making a much longer path to get, not football's most important thing, but it should be convenient. So, maybe that addition turns ninety degrees, and we figure out a way to maybe make a pass through so that you could open it up during games, and you could pass through a vestibule or a breezeway type scenario that you could use for football games, keep them happy to go around the building. Maybe we find another place for the building. And I've not been in that area, but one thing, just looking at the plan, this hallway, this area right here, and putting this addition right here, that, I don't know what would be involved, but we didn't look at that area when we were there that day, so I don't know what would be involved inside the existing school to make that happen. Small connecting hallway that's there, it may not be big enough to support, you know, twelve classrooms of kids, I don't know, so. We can.
Could be turned to heaven, ninety degree angle.
So, the next project was the stadium project, page thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven. We already talked about that layout. Yeah, Don had put together a simple schematic drawing showing what could you do. Bleachers, home, visitors, new concession stands. Every time that the code changes and the state adopts a new code, they usually stay one addition behind what's current. But the code doesn't get any better, in my experience. It forces you to do more and more of it, for life safety reasons, it's a good thing. One of those that it forces you to do is increase your fixture count for plumbing fixtures. If you're looking at a stadium that holds two or three thousand people, you need a lot of restroom, a lot of restroom fixtures. And so, that, it's okay, it just takes space to accommodate all that. So, you end up with some big areas and big buildings to function as a concession and restroom concession.
One thing to talk about, the stadium, you've actually had guards. And maybe know it, but you've got some flat spots, the crown over time has gone away from your football field. And so, I've got some, for some dollars, program for just general site grading, exactly generally. For building pad, building pad, building pad, but not to address the crown on the field. And so, if that was something that you wanted to do, that would be something that would require some precision. We could do it, but it's just precision grading. Because you don't want to mess up the crown, if you're happy with where you got today, or unless you want to come back and make it, put some new sand mix up there on the field, and reestablish the crown. That's something that, while this is going on, if you've ever had thoughts about doing that, that would be the time to do it.
Because of all of the parking is over on this side of the building, and the public is coming from here. Ticket entrances here, it doesn't really make sense to put it over here, there's no parking. But this is just kind of a wayward area right here around the fieldhouse, and people. It's like the Wild West, I mean, the parking, it's, I don't know how to describe it. Don showed a plan to kind of facilitate a more structured parking environment for this area over here, with some handicap.
On any day, you can count around twenty-eight cars that's parking around behind the fieldhouse. And at the fieldhouse and behind over here on this, on this, next door to this gate right here. This parking lot gives you around thirteen spaces, but one thing that we've done is we put dedicated handicap parking right here from the center. And so, they come in, and we had talked about, one alternative we've talked about is pulling this down here because you're really, that, there's only room by the time we get bleachers in here. This access road is going to be really tight. And so, we wanted to see if we can get front of house operations from house. And so, you know, if we elected to move this up here, the front of house operations, the concession stand, and then there's some drainage, you can tell the things that had to be taken care of right here. But long-term operationally, it gets everything to your front door.
And we could leave the ticket booth up there in that area, since that's where the public's going to be coming, concessions and restrooms and all the other things, move down into that, what's green space now, and kind of make that kind of a plaza area. And I'm a little concerned with getting an ambulance or a vehicle, an emergency vehicle, back behind that stadium. There's kind of a pinch point between the school right here and these stairs that come down. The bleachers are probably going to have a bigger footprint than the bleachers that are there now.
And we're going to be into this hillside right here, so we've got budget allowance for a small retaining wall right here so that we can get the road in behind the bleachers.
So, you said we could get a road in by all the bleachers?
It's just, it's just one way, it's not a two-way.
So, emergency could get in. You're going to have to do some retaining laws and changes of the topography back there in that area to make that.
But that was, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. But that was one of the reasons that we wanted to see, investigate further about bringing this from the house.
So, when they walk in now, currently, it's at the corner of those bleachers, the right back corner. So, that doorway, that canopy, we talked about last time, right? And the ticket booth will be with that concession and bathroom, or?
A small ticket booth would stay where that big gray block is.
If it's just a concession and restrooms.
Right, right.
Right now, that's ticket concession and restrooms, and I think the concessions and restrooms, move them down to that green space.
I also think that that's the best, the walkway where the visiting team comes down from the lobby. Or if we wanted to replace that sidewalk or something that was skid resistant.
So, if the visiting team is going to continue to use the locker rooms inside the building, and at halftime, you've got two thousand people trying to get in line and buy a hot dog.
And then they got to move that concession stand, restroom building, front house, that takes that, that comfort away.
Don, if you can...
Not, not during halftime, I mean, during halftime, so you wouldn't have big one. They wouldn't even go in that end of the building, that, that, that stadium would be coming down.
Some portion of this building would remain and the bulk of it, eighty, eighty-five percent would come down like here. So you'd have restroom concessions here and restroom concessions here as well. So there is going to be a restroom concession stand.
That green spot.
Small one, yes.
That, that, that building on the visitor side, that place holder is about twice the size of what's there today. So you could split storage.
This one's over here, okay?
It's, it's a metal building, it's not a bad.
So we are going to move this one down here? That's what we recommend, yes. Because that's what we talked about the last week, yes. So this proposal does count for this going down here? That, that's where else can you use? It was just sitting here, that's why. This, this was an old drawing and we, we didn't redo the drawing because other things were going to change too. I'm with you. So the ticket booth, we would still put it up here? I think so, just because that's where, as we just moved a small building.
It'll offer you an opportunity to put plaza areas and just...
Y'all said it wouldn't be crowded, I was just visually looking at everything here, so yes, it'll be crowded.
No, but it, it puts that plaza area next to your handicap parking. So those folks aren't removed, an opportunity to go and get concessions.
Go to restroom. That handicap parking does, doesn't, that's not the handicap parking required for the entire facility, that's just some of it. So if you wanted to add more handicap parking to that area, you know, we can do that. It's going to lose the ability to park a lot of those twenty-eight cars that are there on a daily basis. I think that's feasible for now.
And really, you know, the, 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 the talk of, of stadium replacement in itself is a unique project. And so this would just a jumping off, this would just a jumping off place.
And then page forty, just a typical layout of the way we're talking about fixture count lines.
This is one of the most, this is the most efficient layout that we've come up with based on the number of stations required. And what's stopping that is the three thousand five hundred seating capacity in the bleachers directly.
The number of, number of seats in the stands directly impacts that, so.
And, and, and something else to keep in mind, that the footprint of the visitor side, the, the property, your property line on that side is almost immediately top of that burn right there. And so our, our seating is, we have to give the narrowness of the football field and the nature of the site, we're having to be long and linear and not deep.
It's Dr. Mason. Is that Dr. Mason on that land?
Yes, sir.
I think he's going to sell. I think he's going to do that.
The, the next school is Livingston Middle. And there were, there were a fair number of items on your list as regards to Livingston Middle. Don, you want to go ahead and talk about this, sorry?
Sure, I think this one, like much, much as, sorry that we've seen, request was for some drainage, site drainage repairs, fence, fence the playground was, was, was something that was unique to this school. And then also some work on the parking lot as far as fixing, fixing, fixing some broken pavement, crack seal, other cracks in the parking lot and then steel man re-strapping. But also including our site numbers is full work gym expansion there as well.
And then the same bell and clock system there, some floor finishes throughout the building, restroom accessibility. One thing that this school had, we didn't see a whole lot of in the other, was carpet. There's still quite a few areas that still have carpet. We've got some money in the budget to address that as well. And then in the gym floors, finishing, finishing the gym floor.
Now, as part of that gym expansion, it's within, within the footprint of the gym expansion, there's a transform that was sitting within that, that's got to be relocated. And while that's being relocated, we would, we would need to make sure that it's a form of way to the building that where it wouldn't require a blast wall as we've had to do in the past.
And one thing we've talked a great deal about is just the size of that three gym expansion, how many squares, square feet, and things like that? I started saying it probably is half the...
On that end of the building, the gray falls off pretty good, so we'll probably have some pretty good foundation to fall. Have to do a bunch of fill around.